It's a good way to get everybody together.
I now call the March 1st, 2022 Board of Commissioners meeting to order. I'm going to call on the Deputy Chief Clerk Kristy McAdams to do the roll call.
Chairman Morgan.
Here.
Flash Chairman McClendon.
Here.
Commissioner Chance.
Here.
Commissioner Lee.
Here.
Commissioner Fuller. Commissioner Reynolds.
Here.
Commissioner Chambers.
Here.
I'm now going to call on Commissioner Lee to lead us in the invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Let's bow our heads. Dear Heavenly Father God, thank you for this day. Thank you for all the blessings you give us, dear God. Dear God, please be with us and help us make the correct decisions for this county, dear God. Dear God, be with those people in Ukraine and protect and bring us through this. And if you would, dear Heavenly Father God, please protect our first responders and protect them and bring them safely home. And dear God, let's not forget one that's hurting tonight. He has a lost loved one and got an empty spot in his heart. Let's remember him and his family and comfort him. For it's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I plead the allegiance to the flag and non-state of America, to the republic which sustains, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You each have a copy of the agenda. I'd like for a motion and a second, please, to approve the agenda as presented to you.
Motion to approve as presented. Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Any opposed?
Vote pass six zero.
All right, thank you. You each have a copy of the minutes from January 27th, the commission meeting from February the first, and our executive session meeting from February the first. Can I have a motion and a second to approve these?
Motion to approve items six point one through six point three is presented.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Vote pass six zero.
All right, thank you. Public comments. Public comments are an opportunity for the public to address the commission with any issues or concerns they may have. All remarks should be directed to the chairman and not to individual commissioners, staff, or citizens in attendance. Members of the public shall not make inappropriate or offensive comments. Any individual who violates the rules of decorum may be removed from the meeting. At this time, the board will not comment nor will the board take any action. Speakers are limited to three minutes. We had a list in back. I have two that have signed up, but I'll ask at the end if there's anyone else who'd like to speak. So we have Keith Knowles.
Hey, my name is Keith Knowles. I live at 152 Open Skyway, Villarica, Georgia. Tonight, we're going to vote on a film production agreement, which is going to be a pretty good agreement for the citizens as far as the renovations of that facility. But on the second hand, in December's meeting, we voted on the first responders' bonus. To date, that bonus hasn't been paid out. Now, I don't know who's responsible for that. Is it commission chair, district commissioners, department heads? Who's responsible for that? So as we go forward into voting on that tonight, why can't we consider some contingencies that prevent these kind of things from happening? I understand some of these agreements can be complicated and complex and certain rosters, but three months has gone by and none of these first responders have got what was due to them. It looks good on the front end to vote this stuff, right? But if it's not procuring on the back end, it's not doing any good if nobody's being held accountable for these types of agreements not coming to fruition. So consider cleaning up some of the old agreements or existing agreements that haven't come to fruition yet before we carry on with a bunch more. And also consider adding some accountability into some of these agreements in the event that they do fail, that who's actually going to be held responsible to pick up the ball and actually keep moving it forward and see that it comes fruition, comes to fruition for the taxpayers and the citizens. Thank you.
Robert Blakemore.
Good evening. I'm Robert Blakemore. We live at 405 Adamson Road in Bowden, Georgia, and I'm also the president of the Carroll County Historical Society. And on behalf of the society, we'd like to express our appreciation for the recent work performed on the James B. Moore Historic Home. And we'd also like to ask if you would take consideration, as the restoration of the home is planned, that the three dormers be added back to the roof of the home as part of the original construction. Thank you.
At this time, is there anyone else who'd like to come before to speak to the Board of Commissioners? I'll ask a second time. Is there anyone else who'd like to come and speak before us during the public comment section? Well, seeing and hearing none, we will move on. Item eight is a consent agenda. The items under this action were discussed at the public work session, excuse me, the public work session on Thursday, February 24th. These are available on www.carrollcountyga, and these will be presented as one item and only one vote will be taken. So eight point one is the pathways renovation, ARPA grant agreement. Eight point two is a mobile crisis unit, also an ARPA grant agreement. Eight point three is the historic courthouse and courthouse air conditioning drivers. Eight point four is a film location agreement. Eight point five is magistrate wall project. Eight point six is a Coweta Judicial Circuit salary supplement ordinance. Eight point seven is RFQ for an architect for the administration building. Do I have a motion and a second to accept these?
A motion to accept.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Any opposed?
Vote pass six zero.
Thank you. We're now going to move into the business session, nine point one. We have an RFQ for an architect on the Villarica Fire Station, and we have Commissioner Chance here to present this to us.
Thank you, Madam Chairman and Board of Commissioners. If you will indulge me a few moments, I kind of want to walk through the process of what has been happening since the Splast Continuation referendum passed in 2021, March of 2021. We've been doing a lot of due diligence work. Since that time, I have met with Chairman Morgan, and the chairman did agree to allow us to put together a construction committee, and I thank her for that. Our work has been working very well. I kind of wanted to go through the phases. We've essentially identified five different phases in this. Phase one was the organization and the structure of the actual committee itself. Phase two is what we're here for this evening, which is the selection of the architect. We'll have phase three, which is a programming and planning session. Phase four is when an RFP for the general contractor will be constructed and put out to bid, and then phase five will be the actual construction of the project through owner-architect and contractor meetings. Back to phase one, the chairman and I spoke, and we agreed to have five voting members on this committee that have worked very well, myself, to represent the elected body, since this is located inside of my district. Fire rescue chief Chuck Barnwell, deputy fire rescue chief Dave Wade, firefighter Cody Mayfield, and public works superintendent Mr. Danny Yates. Obviously, our fire department's very well represented. We also, through the chief and deputy chief, they felt important that one of those individuals be someone who would probably be living inside this facility. We wanted to make sure that this didn't look like it was only bureaucracy or only administrators that were making decisions. So that's how that came about, to have firefighter Cody Mayfield involved, and we're glad to have him. Also, superintendent Danny Yates. We're hopeful that our public works department will be able to do a good bit of work through this project and save the taxpayers a lot of money as we go forward, certain things that we can eliminate out of the GC contract. So it's good to have him on our team as well. Also, non-voting members, I wanted to recognize an administrative assistant at fire rescue who's been our secretary, Ms. Michelle Mahaney. Also, our purchasing clerk, who has been the point of contact through this process, Sunday Cook, and also our legal counsel, Ms. Stacy Blackman. After we formed the organization of the committee, we met and tried to put together a proposal packet to have guidelines, set forth guidelines of what we would like to see presented. So we created that amongst ourselves in the committee with the help of legal counsel and also with a consultant. Our committee authorized the consultant to bring forward some architects for us with a few parameters, a couple of those parameters that they could not have current or recent litigation, they could not have had litigation with Carroll County previously, and they did need to be local to the West Georgia community. I do want to point out, we felt, with architectural services, that's considered professional services, so we have the ability as a county just to hire someone on the outright. We did not have to go through any type of process if we didn't choose to. But we did choose to not do a formal RFP, but we did choose to go through some type of planning process so that there would be some accountability and that we felt the architect had to earn their position to be selected. They weren't just chosen and didn't have to do anything to earn the business. So I did want to clarify that. We had a mandatory onsite meeting after the proposals, the proposers were identified by the consultant on February 3rd at the actual site in Villarica. We went through the packet, gave them the packet, went over some generic information that was in it, went over some of the forethoughts from the committee, and we gave them an opportunity based off of that to ask us of questions there onsite. There were a couple of different firms that were represented there that did ask questions. After that point in time, there was a process that they could email us questions through our purchasing agent, and they did that as well, and we were able to give them some answers that they needed to complete their proposals. The proposal deadline was on February the 18th. We conducted interviews on February the 21st. That was one hour, one hour and a half, 90 minutes. From that and from a scoring sheet, and you do have some packets of information from the firm that we're presenting for recommendation this evening, the committee felt that Rickman Architect and Design, based off the scoring and based off their interview process, we felt that they would do an admirable job for us. They did meet all of the prequalifications on the checklist that we identified with our legal counsel and through our committee work. I did want to go over a few things that the architectural firm, I think, is important for those to understand why they were chosen, and also some terms that they were agreeable to or amenable to in the contract. One of the big things is you hire an architect, but they have subs that work for them. And so that would include engineers, electrical engineers, mechanical engineers, and so forth. So the company has actually agreed in the contract for us to have some control over that, so we're not having a packet, and then there's a bait and switch, because who they hire as subs is very important to having a quality design product. The other thing is, you see in design work a lot of copying, pasting from previous projects that they've done, maybe all over the state or all over the southeast, and then you run into a lot of errors. This company has assured us that they like to do a lot of their work from ground up, so hopefully that will be eliminating a lot of errors. So we'll have active hyperlinks for those of you who know that terminology. Mr. Rickman, who is the proprietor of the firm, has a substantial resume himself, but the gentleman named Mr. Mark Freeman, he will be the senior project lead if this company is confirmed this evening. He's got over 32 years of experience, and many of those in designing fire stations throughout the southeast. So the committee felt very comfortable with the professional team there and the experience that they brought forward. In the packet, you will also notice they're looking at a six months' design time. Obviously, we hope that we can complete that even sooner than that time, but they felt comfortable without a doubt that it could be completed within that timeframe. We want to have a quality product, so we want to finish it as soon as possible, but we don't want to press them to the point that we feel like they're not going to give us a quality product. So the committee felt good about the timeframe. Also, we asked about their workload. If confirmed, the company can start this month. If confirmed, the company can start this month. There were several projects they have completed on their company profile that are dropping off at the end of last month and this month as well. That's going to free up a lot of their design team schedule. So we felt good that they'll be able to take this project on from the get-go. Another thing, we asked them about their internal processes. They seem to have some internal staff or some exterior professionals as well that would be able to assist them in helping look over their design work as well. Hopefully, an extra set of eyes to catch any errors that might occur. The firm presented a proposal in the monetary amount of $235,350 with a fee schedule that allows for alternate subtracts on a couple of things that the committee had asked them to list out, and also a fee schedule that specifically deals with additional services if those happen to be required. I do have a motion prepared, Madam Chairman, but before that, if it's your will, we would be happy to answer any questions that the board might have. Also, Chief Barnwell is here, and also Mr. Rickman, representing the architectural firm, is here this evening. If there are any questions for those professionals.
Commissioners, do y'all have any questions? Well, seeing and hearing none, you did such a thorough job of it. You want to go ahead and prepare your motion?
Thank you. I would like to make a motion to approve Rickman Architect and Design LLC for the purpose of architectural services and the replacement of Villarica Fire Rescue Station Number Nine in an amount not to exceed $235,350 with predetermined additional fee schedules as outlined and contingent upon final contract negotiations with our consultant, legal counsel, and Chairman Morgan.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. This time, is there any further discussion or any further questions? Well, seeing and hearing none, all those in favor? Any opposed?
Vote pass six zero.
At this time, I don't have anything else further on the agenda, so I'll take a motion and a second to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, so I heard Montrel was the motion and George was the second. Great, all those in favor? Any opposed?
Vote pass six zero.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you, guys.